All right.
Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, meeting order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Good morning. Uh, we have a very light agenda this morning, so, uh, we'll get started. Our first item is the Hampton Roads Alliance in Business. Mr. Jared Charles, oh Doug Smith?
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do I need a microphone?
Uh, yes.
If y'all don't mind, I'm gonna stand up. I'm Doug Smith with the Hampton Roads Alliance and Chairman Evelyn and members of the Board of Supervisors. Really nice to be with you this morning and, um, uh, believe it or not, I left home a little bit before seven and just bolted into the driveway. So between the, uh, the bridge tunnels and the wrecking fork used to think that little interesting. You all had this presentation and, um, I'm not going through the whole thing. I'm gonna literally jump to slide twelve. Uh, the first handful of slides give you some good background about us and kind of where we've been. I'd love to sort of tell that story at some point, but I want you to have it. What I'm gonna talk to you about is what we think is a, is a moment in time. Is this gonna advance me or are you gonna advance me? Click the left side. All right, there we go. Fantastic. Right. So again, I'm gonna blow by this first section that talks about us, kind of who our partners are, what we do for you guys. Um, and then I'm gonna talk about what's really, what we see is, um, our moment in time. Um, there's a lot of interesting stuff happening in the world today and the things that have been, that, that we've done in Hampton Roads in this area for the last twenty or thirty years have really been undervalued and underappreciated and tha- and that's changing. And we'll tell you what that means and what we think that means for New Kent County. There's an unbelievable amount of federal government spending that's taking place right now and funding a lot of the things that we want to do here. I'm gonna talk to you about AUKUS. Are folks familiar with the Australia, UK, US Trilateral Agreement? I'm gonna talk to you what we think the opportunities are there. Then I'm gonna talk to you about real estate, which I think is a big play for, for New Kent County. We'll chat about what that means. And then I'm gonna also, at the end, um, take a little bit of time for, uh, Michael Evans, who's our Director of Business Intelligence, and Steve Harrison, who's our Chief Operating Officer, are here. I want Michael to tell you some of the things that we can do around research for you all that I think is really valuable in the short run. Th- this is who we, I'm gonna do this quickly. Y'all, y'all know this, but this is kind of who Hampton Roads is. And there's, there's really no greater concentration of military presence, federal presence arguably on the planet, but certainly not, uh, in this country. But here's what's happening in the world today. And I want you to think about this. There is, the disruption that we've seen in the last, uh, four or five years has been pretty remarkable. If you think about, uh, the wars in Ukraine, uh, the wars in, in Israel, you think about rising tensions with China. Uh, COVID nineteen changed so much in terms of supply chain and, and how we function. And then bring climate crisis in. There's a lot of things happening that are disrupting the economy. What that's driving is a real catalyst for change in military spending and military investment. You're seeing a real, uh, reinvestment in the, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Um, we spent thirty years at least offshoring, globalizing, seemed like the right thing to do at the time. It really, what we've learned is it's created a really supply, a really fragile supply chain for our economy. And, um, obviously, I will tell you that, um, we don't get a, see a big, um, prospect coming to the region that doesn't wanna talk about where do we get access to renewable energy, right? And we'll talk a little bit about what sort of the climate, uh, change and climate crisis has done. We've engaged a guy named Bruce Katz. And if, if, if this stuff is interesting to you, Google Bruce Katz and new localism. And he's done some really interesting writing. Uh, but he argues that what you're seeing right now is a, uh, re-militarization, reshoring, and, um, decarbonization, all happening at once, enormous amounts of money flowing, very little direction on how to do it. And the regions that figure out how to take advantage of that, he believes are gonna be military metros. I think check the box for us, um, tech hubs. And I'm gonna argue if, are folks familiar with what's happening at Jefferson Lab with the high-performance data facility? Pay attention, that's a five hundred million dollar DOE, um, investment that's really focused on artificial, uh, intelligence. I think you'll see us, I'm gonna argue we're a tech hub. I think we've really become a tech hub after that lab, um, uh, expands. Climate first movers, um, uh, we, we, our organization's gotten really involved in offshore wind in the last four or five years. And, um, what's happened is we have become a logistics, um, and marshaling hub for offshore wind. And, uh, we announced a six hundred and fifty million dollar Korean, um, ma- um, investment, uh, for a cable manufacturer in Chesapeake recently. And we've got a couple, a couple other really large, uh, folks looking at the region for, uh, manufacturing. So we will become a center for offshore wind and then trading powerhouses. And so obviously, the port of Virginia puts us in that game in, in a big way. Now, I'm gonna tell you, um, I think what you're really talking about with trading powerhouses is the folks that are doing manufacturing and selling those goods abroad. And I'm gonna talk some more about, uh, what I think is really a little bit of a dynamic tension between warehousing and manufacturing that you're gonna see in terms of, um, of decisions on investments. Um, so that orange box up there is really the question of, all right, with those dynamics taking place, what does that mean for the Hampton Roads region and for New Kent County? And what we think it means is the industries that we're, where we're seeing real opportunities are defense, uh, knowledge work and cybersecurity, energy and unmanned systems, and transportation and logistics. And I'll touch on each of those really quickly. I mentioned AUKUS, uh, Trilateral Agreement between Australia, UK, US. We have had, um, no less than forty or fifty Australian companies in the region in the last year. And that, it, it's a, uh, I'll talk some more about that. It's really in, in large part about the submarine program. The reality is, you know, we're, this was, um, remember, I don't know if it's been three or four years ago when the French were gonna sell the nuclear sub to the Australians? And, uh, it, it, it looked like the US swooped in and took that contract. There's a whole lot more to it than that, but that's essentially where all this started. But it's an agreement among these three coun- countries that we are going to help one another, particularly as it relates to the Indo-Pacific. So if you think about, uh, four or five weeks, maybe probably ten weeks ago now, Congress, a lot of gnashing of teeth in Congress about the sixty billion dollar aid package, a lot of conversation about Ukraine, a lot of conversation about Gaza and Israel. What didn't get a lot of attention is ten billion of that was for the Indo-Pacific. And three and a half billion of that was for the AUKUS program, with the Australians matching that three and a half billion with three billion of their money. So there's real money flowing into this as well. So a lot of conversation about pillar one, which is the, the, the development of the nuclear subs and helping Australia build their own nuclear sub by twenty forty. Um, you're looking at Newport News Ship needs to hire another twenty thousand people in the next five years. We'll talk a little about that a little bit more. What's gotten less attention is what they call pillar two, which is really all the technology that supports a lot of the things that we're talking about doing. So cybersecurity, quantum, uh, technologies, artificial intelligence. Um, I'll go back one. I'm not gonna work, not gonna try to do that. So with that context, uh, we, we engaged Bruce Katz and his team out at Drexel, uh, University to come in and do three things. Examine the amount of federal spending that takes place in our region, particularly DoD spending. Look at the green supply chain. So if you're gonna have, if you're gonna decarbonize, what does that look like? Where are those opportunities? And then the critical industries that have been identified by the administration, what are, what are our opportunities in those spaces? And we've gotten that, uh, that report. And I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about what came out in that. This is a, a, a bit of an eye chart, but I think it's interesting to see, to my, to my knowledge, nobody's looked at DoD spending at a regional level. You see it at a state level, how much is spent in Virginia, how much is spent in Texas? You see it at a local level, how much is spent in, in Dallas or how much is spent in Newport News? But, and what, why that's important is when we had, we've had two large groups of Australians come in and, and we've made presentations to them and probably fifteen or twenty companies represented. I said, how many of you, when you got on the plane to head over here, before that had heard of Hampton Roads, right? Two or three hands go up. How many of y'all had heard of San Diego? Everybody's hand goes up, right? Reality is more DoD spending happens in our market than in San Diego, but it's dispersed. You know, four billion gets spent at the beach, three billion gets spent in Newport News. And so we're, we're underappreciated in terms of what that, the, the, what happens here. Why is that important? Because we're the customer for a lot of these companies that are gonna wanna invest in these industries. And it's really important that we understand what's being spent, but who's making the decisions about what's gonna be bought, uh, whether it's for the Navy, the Marines, uh, Army, Air Force. So then you look at green supply chain and, um, we think we have some huge opportunities in nuclear energy. I'm gonna tell, how much have y'all talked about energy and energy and what's gonna happen with energy demand in the next ten or fifteen years? A lot, a little? Fair bit? All right, so you, so next, next, next fifteen years, demand is literally going to double, right? You can, I don't, I don't believe you can meet that demand without nuclear energy. And so you're seeing, so I, 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 I know, uh, I know you may have come, but we had a, we co-hosted an energy summit in Williamsburg about a month ago with the State Chamber to kind of have this conversation. I think, I think economic development is changing a lot today in the last couple of years. And one of the things that I think is incumbent upon economic developers is we need to educate our elected leaders to understand what the dynamics are around some of these large infrastructure projects. You can argue, but all I want you to do is, is, uh, we can look at the same, the same set of facts, come to different conclusions, and that's okay as long as we're dealing with the same set of facts. And so we think it's really important that we help elected leaders, business leaders in our regions, understand what the dynamics are that are coming our way. And the best example I can give you is Virginia Beach has, is gonna spend literally billions of dollars on recurrent flooding. They've got an offshore wind project in North Carolina, Kitty Hawk, that would power close to a million homes with renewable energy. But there's a huge fight over bringing that power ashore in Sandbridge. So a local land use decision, um, is, is driving what is really a regional challenge around energy. So it's really, and if, in hindsight, we should have been way ahead of that conversation before it ever got into the chambers and, and, and folks started lining up on different places. Uh, and the reason I say nuclear is Newport News Ship has been building, has been putting two nuclear reactors on an aircraft carrier, one on a sub for decades, right? We have the talent, we have the expertise, we have the military folks coming out each year that can be, um, in that space. We talked quickly about, um, wind energy. Um, and then you look at the, in the, the slide, the portion of the slide on the left, it are those key technologies, right? And where do we have strengths? And it doesn't mean you can't sort of punch your way up to, um, the higher level on some of these things. But when they look at us and say, where do you have some natural, already have some natural, um, expertise and advantages? It's cybersecurity, data storage, data management. Think about, again, that, that really not even talking about Jefferson Lab and what's gonna happen at the high-performance data facility. A lot of that is about the military, uh, and the expertise we have in the military. So part of what we're doing, one of the, one of the questions I tend to get in making these presentations is, yeah, I thought we talked the last twenty years about diversifying away from the military, diversifying away from defense, diversifying away from federal spending. And candidly, I was one of the folks running around saying we needed to do that. It was probably the right position at the time. You had sequestration going on, you had certain challenges. What we wanna do now is diversify within those, within that space. So think about, um, cybersecurity, really important to the military, re- really important to every one of your businesses, every one of your homes. Nuclear energy, really important to the military, also really important to powering our businesses and our homes. So what are those dual-use technologies that work for the military, work in the private sector? One of them we think is unmanned systems or uncrewed systems. And, um, so we think we have some really advantages in all of those spaces. So what is all that taking, so I've got, there's a, if, if anybody's interested, we've got a, a deck of, of the, the supporting information from Bruce Katz and his team that kind of drives those three slides. But, um, so the, the, this third bullet is the one I want you to see, really think about. But, but the first bullet says, all right, we're gonna take all that data and now what do you do with it? We're gonna try and identify, I think, three to five, six to eight big projects that the region needs to get behind. And, uh, we're gonna call that, uh, a regional investment playbook. And I think you'll see things like a DoD Center of Excellence, maybe as around, particularly focused on AUKUS. I think you'll see it say something like, the region doesn't graduate enough engineers. We need to do programs to graduate more engineers. I think, I think there'll be some really interesting things that, that come out of this. We'll spend the next ninety days developing that, that playbook and figuring out what's in there. And then it is going and finding the capital stack that can fund those projects. And we can talk more about this. But I love this last bullets from Bruce's team. Says graduate, Hampton Roads needs to graduate from a region focused on the end assembly of sophisticated projects, right, products. We build nuclear subs, we build nuclear aircraft carriers, we're now building, uh, wind turbines. But we're not participating on the front end of innovation, right? So it's one that participates more extensively in technological innovation in earlier parts of the supply chain. We need to create that innovation, that research that supports, uh, those, those industries. And that's what's gonna create the high wage, high skill jobs. So, um, side by side with all of that is the real estate, right? You, and if, all this is wonderful. If you don't have a place to put these companies, then you're not in the game. And candidly, Virginia has not done an adequate job of investing in what we call business-ready sites. Companies that come in, and we're, I would tell you, we have probably five projects right now that are anywhere from a half a billion to three billion dollars of investment, right? We may, we may get one or two of them, we may not get any of them. But you're not in the game for those projects if you don't have a place to put them, right? It's, and it can't be, um, I've got fourteen hundred acres of, of undeveloped property. It's gotta be, I've got fourteen hundred acres of development-ready property. So one of the things we're gonna wanna talk to you all about is this Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. This is really pretty slick because it allows a community to invest in a project in another community and share in the revenues. What that means is, uh, somebody like Virginia Beach, who frankly is fairly fully developed. You know, they're not gonna cross the green line in the agricultural area, I don't think. We'll find out next spring when they release their comp plan. But it means Virginia Beach could invest in a project in Chesapeake or invest in a project in New Kent County and share in those revenues. It means a community that might not have the assets to develop a fourteen hundred acre, three thousand acre piece of property can get investment from other communities and, and share those revenues. So, um, we think it's a really interesting piece. We're working with KPMG to do a, an analysis of all of the industrial sites, um, in the region and, and what it's gonna take to make those sites, uh, development-ready. Um, so what it really means is there's a, there's a new economic model and I think a new regional economic order that's coming out of all of this. Um, I love this phrase, the arsenal of democracy. I mean, that's really what we are. And you're, and, and I could talk about this i- in a lot more depth. But, uh, Newport News Ship, um, in the eighties had seventy-five hundred vendors, right? Today, they've got twenty-five hundred vendors, right? An enormous amount of their supply chain is provided by a sole-source vendor, right? That is a very fragile supply chain. And so we've gotta help that supply chain, um, be, be more robust. Uh, I, I made a presentation like this to, to Virginia Beach and I came back and I called somebody at Newport News Ship. Hey, this thing went really well. You know, they didn't really care about Newport News Ship because they're not very close behind. He said, well, they should have. They have, Virginia Beach has fifty-one vendors for Newport News Ship that spend, and Newport News will spend about three-quarters of a billion dollars with those fifty-one vendors over the next five years. So one of the things we're doing is really trying to better understand who those current domestic suppliers are and what we need to do to make them, um, successful. And then again, I touched on this thing of really preparing for the future. If you don't have sites, you're not in the game. So where does New Kent County fit in that? So one of the things we're doing, I make this presentation, I've made it to some folks at Weaving Mary, I've made it to Old Dominion, I've made it to different city councils, to different EDAs. I don't believe our region has ever created that, an economic development strategy that, that, that went down into the locality level, into the organizational level to say, hey, this is where I think, where we think you fit in this picture. You, what I challenge you all to do is spend some time on this slide. And you may say, Doug, now you, you missed number one, we're really this or we're really that. But our initial analysis is when you look at those three buckets, when you look at that maritime industrial bucket, um, you go to places like Sheffield, England, that has the, um, Advanced Manufacturing Research Center that surrounds a big foundry there that actually supports Newport News Ship. They've got tons of land around this, this DoD Center of Excellence, if you will, that does, um, additive manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, and, and companies, big companies surrounding them. We don't really have a place like that, that we could go drop something like that today. So we think what you're gonna have is a constellation of defense parks, right? Which is actually kind of, I think, really good for the region, meaning this stuff will get spread out, right? Every, every community's gonna have their opportunity to play. So I think there's an opportu, we think there's an opportunity for New Kent, if you're interested, to play in that space. On the energy side, you've got some, you've got some world-class developers here and looking here that are looking in the region and the, and the ability to, to team with them and create some really prime, uh, spots. Again, I think, and I've had this conversation with Stephen Edwards, I think you're starting to see some tension between warehousing and manufacturing. And, 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 and we love the port and we love warehousing, but we really love manufacturing. You know, because manufacturing gives you those higher skilled jobs, those, those higher taxes. And so a conversation we're all gonna have is, is do you want this to be a warehouse site? Do you want it to be a manufacturing site? It's, it's, I can go build a spec warehouse, right? Because I know the market's gonna be there. I can't go build a spec manufacturing facility because it's, it's so specialized. But again, I think that's conversation we're all gonna need to have. And then on the knowledge work and, and cybersecurity piece, again, these, these advanced manufacturing data centers. You know, one of the things, Hampton Roads has really not been in the game for data centers because we haven't had sites that, that would accommodate them. So a, a conversation I think y'all are probably having or will have is, you know, what is your role in that data center game and on the, on the cybersecurity piece? So that's, um, I may pause there, that's right at twenty minutes. I want Michael to have three minutes just to talk to you about business intelligence. One of the things that I think is really special about us for a smaller community is, smaller communities don't tend to have the resources to do the, to invest in the kind of platforms that we have. And so one of, if, if, it, it, it's the sort of immediate opportunity for you all is to leverage Michael and his team. So I'm gonna ask you to plug in your couple of slides. And we'll take questions.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see some of you all again. Uh, I know I got the chance to meet some of you at Colonial Downs a couple of months back, but for those of you who haven't met, my name's Michael Evans. I'm the Director of Business Intelligence for the Alliance. Uh, my role, basically, I oversee our research and real estate solution services. So as Doug mentioned, I'm gonna go over some of that with you guys today so that way you can see how to best leverage the partnership really between the Alliance and New Kent County. So getting started here on, on kind of the research, business intelligence side, we have a lot of different services and tools that you all can leverage. We have a suite of, of softwares that you all have access to with your partnership to the, with the Alliance, such as Lightcast, Dun &amp; Bradstreet, M-Plan, Esri, a ton of really powerful business intelligence softwares that we can use to basically provide you with kind, really any kind of data that you might want. So I've kind of narrowed them down here into about three different buckets. So kind of starting with the, the data services side, uh, we're able to provide a lot of in-depth workforce and demographics data. Uh, so this is frequently used by both the Alliance and from our local partners to get workforce information related to labor costs, workforce availability, job postings, really any sort of labor-related information that you could want. And we can pull these, these data points really as broadly or as narrowly as you'd like. So we can go as narrow as zip code, as broadly as the state level, and we can do comparative statistics between any other geographic area that you'd like. Um, it's also worth mentioning with that data point, we are also the research arm for the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. So this is an area that we like to think we're, we're pretty strong in. Um, on the economic indicator reports and economic research, this is actually one of the areas where we send out regular reports. So we send out quarterly economic indicator reports to, uh, all of our member communities at the regional level. We also offer them customized for the locality level. And this really contains a lot of your typical economic indicators. So things like unemployment, employment, labor force participation, and largest employers in the community. So on that note, we're actually one of the only regional organizations that publishes a regular report on the largest employers. Uh, we publish that on a quarterly basis using BEC data. We're actually gonna be sending that one out really soon, so we're looking forward to sharing that with you guys. Um, we also provide company and contact data support, should you ever need it through some of these software. So Dun &amp; Bradstreet, Hoover's provides the ability for us to get company data at either the industry level. So if you wanna know how, how many companies or what companies are in a particular industry in your community, if you want a list of, you know, companies that have ten or more employees in your community, we can provide that information. We can also provide information on contact data. So if you have a particular company you wanna contact with or that's, that you're either trying to recruiting or that's in your community, we can help you find that piece of contact information. So in the second bucket here, we have our research services, so market feasibility analysis. So that kind of analysis is say you have a business that you're trying to recruit and you wanna see if it's a good fit for your community. We can look at these data points to see whether or not that business would be successful, what the market looks like, what the demand looks like for those types of industries. Or if you have, uh, a piece of land and you're trying to look for kind of that best use case for that piece of land, we can use our softwares to do that kind of stuff. Uh, we've used it to do a lot of the Rite Aid replacements in the area. So a lot of communities with Rite Aid closures have been looking to see what the best use case for those could be. And we've done a lot of these to see whether urgent care, harbor freight, Pet Co's, whatever it might be, would be a good replacement for those, uh, for those pieces of land. Uh, we also provide detailed wage and salary studies. So whether that's a full market salary survey or just kind of a, an analysis of what salaries and labor looks like in a particular industry, in a particular area, we can do that as well. And then one of our other unique services is economic and fiscal impact analyses. So these are, are basically, if you wanna see the tax implications of a project in your community. So if you're trying to see what the financial benefit, what the cost benefit would be of a particular project, we can run those either through M-Plan if it's a tight turnaround or we can work with our kind of local offices to see what the true tax value would be. So you really know and have a general idea of what the value of that project will be to your community. Uh, we also have what I call our, our ad hoc research and support services. So I say this because frequently we'll have conversations with our local partners and they'll be working with a consultant on different studies for their community. And there's a good chance that a lot of these consultants are using the same software, the same tools, the same resources that we'll be using at the Alliance. So actually, so far this year, we've saved two of our local partners over forty thousand dollars in consulting fees for them just sending over the scope of work to me, um, and us conducting that research for them. So I always encourage you, if you ever run across that situation, shoot that over to me and we, chances are, we can help you with at least part of it. And then, of course, we have our regular monthly, quarterly, and annual reports that we'll send out. So these are on topics like DoD spending, federal contract spending in your area. I mentioned the economic indicator and largest employer reports, and then the real estate reports, which I'll touch on here in just a minute. And then finally, on the business intelligence side, we have our support services. So we have economic development training. So, uh, if you ever need, or any, any of your, uh, local departments need, uh, training on economic development research, economic research in general, or if they just want a refresher or an introduction to some of the services we offer at the Alliance, we offer those types of trainings as well. And then we also have our sales force support. So we manage the regional sales force platform. And we're actually excited to see New Kent will be joining us early November on that platform. So we're excited to, to see that happen and see the expansion of that. So moving on to real estate solutions, we also have several services to, for you guys to leverage here. So we have access to the full suite of CoStar data for real estate searches and in-depth market analysis. So if you're familiar with CoStar, they, uh, they have several different platforms that you may be more familiar with, homes.com, apartments.com, or all kind of that CoStar family. Uh, so using this tool, we can provide a lot of benchmarking and comparative analysis for properties. A lot of our local partners will reach out on behalf of some of their local small businesses to see what, you know, lease rates might be, what comparable values might be for a particular piece of property. And we can also use CoStar data to get an idea of what the market looks like for really any property in, in your, in your area. Uh, we use this to get like average lease rates, vacancy rates, really any sort of market condition data point, CoStar will have it. And that kind of leads me to my next point, which is the real estate market and property research. So we can provide a lot of reporting at the county market, submarket level on, um, any sort of real estate data. And the CoStar data goes back about thirty-five years. So really, if you want a snapshot of current time or a really long-term trend, we can provide that information to you. And now, of course, with the addition of our newest real estate analyst, Josh Sterling. And now, of course, with the addition of our newest real estate analyst, Josh Sterling, which I'm sure some of you will get a chance to meet him at some point, we're moving into a lot of strategic planning and marketing for some of the key sites in the region. So with a focus on kind of that site readiness and regional industrial needs, which of course you just heard about from Doug, we're really undergoing a wide range of site evaluations to see what, what sites are currently in the market, what really needs to be done to get them pad-ready, and then what the highest and best use for those sites are. And from there, we're going to be working on some strategic marketing initiatives, so that way we can ensure all of the right people, so site selection consultants, all the right brokers know about the property, and we can make sure that it's top of mind when a project comes forward. Now, on the reporting side, much like with the research services, we provide regular reports like lease expirations, so we'll provide two-year lease expirations on a quarterly basis, so you know what leases are coming up in your community, so you can work on retaining those businesses if needed. We also provide reports on the largest transactions and quarterly reports on industry sectors in the real estate markets. So we recently sent out our office report, we're working on our industrial report now. So it's probably a good time to mention, if any of you want to be added to our distribution list for these reports, just let me know, and I can make sure moving forward that you guys receive those. And then to wrap up here with the support services on the real estate side, one of our core services that we offer is really our RFI responses and site data maintenance. So our goal, really, anytime an RFI or request for information from the state comes in, is that when it comes into our office, before it leaves our office and goes to our local economic development offices, we want that RFI to be about 80 to 90% complete. So that way, our local teams can really focus on kind of making the case for their community, making the case for their site, really providing value-add information rather than spending time on the basics that we have. And then we use this information to update our internal sites on Salesforce, so we have an entire property database in Salesforce, which means kind of the longer we're working with the community, the better our responses get, because the more we can fill it out, the more we learn. So we also provide support to our local partners with site readiness and grant application efforts, so like for the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program, any sort of site characterization grants, really any sort of grants that you guys want to pursue for site readiness purposes, we're here to support in any way we can, whether that's helping with filling out the information, getting you a narrative to use, anything like that, more than happy to do that. And finally, we have our coordination services for site tours, so we have our annual site tours with the EDP. We'll actually be bringing them up to our peninsula communities in early November, so you guys will be seeing them here soon in New Kent. And then we also arrange any site tours with consultants that are necessary. So we do this, so essentially, your team can really focus on kind of strategy and messaging during those meetings, rather than coordinating all the logistics, which is a very time-consuming effort on their part. So I know that's a lot of information in a short amount of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have, and really looking forward to, to our partnership with New Kent County.
Thank you very much. We're really looking forward to it as well. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just sign me up for those reports. Okay, you got it.
I know you're going to be, you know, we have our EDA Director and our Chairman of the EDA here today, so I'm glad they were here to be able to hear the presentation. And again, we are looking forward to, to working with the Alliance. We feel like it's going to be a great relationship for, for us and y'all.
Our annual meeting will be the 27th of February, it'll actually be at Christopher Newport University. What we do every other year is we invite, we encourage all the local elected leaders to come an hour ahead of time. We give a little bit of brief, it does a couple of things. One, if you think about it, there's 102 local elected leaders, right? Every other year, half of them are running, right? So we're churning people, it's, it's an opportunity to tell the story. It's also, the, the county chairs, the mayors tend to get to see one another, right? The, the elected, the, the, the council members and supervisors don't. So it's, it's a venue that allows you to meet your peers in other communities, and invariably there's something that they're dealing with that you're also dealing with, and so I just, I'd encourage you to put the 27th of February on your calendar, you'll get more information about that, because we'd love to have you all. We've got Dave Soldow from Newport New Ship, who's very involved in this office program, is going to be our speaker. So we're thrilled to have you all in the Alliance and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Our next item this morning is the approval of New Kent County's Emergency Operations Plan, Chief Opett.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good morning. It's hard to believe, but I'm back again, four years later, to update the county's emergency operation plan. As I normally do, I will just go over the changes to the current plan, just to update, let you all know kind of what we've worked on and the updates that are necessary to go into the plan. So the very first change that we did, obviously, is we're going to change the date, if, if, if this is approved today. Secondly, we replace the board resolution, adopting the 2020 plan, that has to go in, and then we'll put the 2024 basic plan resolution in as well. We updated all of the EOP Emergency Operation Plan contacts, that, we keep that updated actually on a, on a monthly, quarterly basis, but we do update that in our emergency operation plan. Globally, we did some editing and footer work, just to, to update those pages, et cetera, page numbers. We updated our population and demographic based on the 2020 census, and again, it, it model, it represents the growth that we were seeing in there, and how the growth is, the demographics of the age groups that we're starting to see in there, so it allows us to better plan for those specific hazards that may affect us in the future. So we've updated that information as well. Let's see, in subsection E of the basic plan, we added and had to clarify the whole community methodologies as required by the Virginia State Statute. And what that means, basically, we had to incorporate, now our plan has always incorporated whole community and diversity and equity, but we really had to, based on the statute, put a label on the DEI in our plan. So that has been updated for diversity, equity, and inclusion into our plans. But we've always had that in there, it's just after COVID, they put a statute that we had to, to label that as such. Also, we've updated the most current versions of applicable statutes and plans in here, so that would be in Appendix 3, the authorities updated the new additions with the new dates, that would be both federal, state, and local plans, or references or authorities that we have to put into each of our emergency operation plans. And that's anywhere from our National Response Framework to the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide, to the, our own Commonwealth Virginia Emergency Services and Disaster Law. And then obviously, here locally, we have to include our, our Richmond Creator Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and our THIRA that we do, which is our Threat Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment. So that has been updated. The next update is, we added actually Quinton Elementary School. So when, when we approved this last time, Quinton Elementary was just getting started, so now we have to include our plans to include Quinton Elementary. Basic Plan Appendix 12, Victim Services, we had to add or address victim protection and resources in emergency where crimes are involved per Virginia State Statute. And then obviously, the Record of Changes that I'm reading to you, that is updated. And then we go in and do a full edit after that, and those are some changes of grammar and syntax, et cetera. So that's where we are. And just to give you kind of a quick, brief of what we're working on for 2028 to come before you, but it'll be done well before that, we're currently working on our coop and cog plan, and that is our continuity of operations here in the county as a whole, as well as our continuity of government plan. That's in full force as we, as we're moving forward, and that is basically a plan that if something would happen, pick one, a cyber threat, how, how does the government continue to work? So we have a plan for that. Or continuity of operations, if something would happen to this green, or this building, like we get a flood, where do we move all these operations in that short-term period? So those are some things that you'll see in the next change of that plan. Also, we're working on updating our plan for active threat, to include again, the new Quinton Elementary School, as well as all the county facilities on this campus, as well as in the county. And then lastly, I say lastly, it's a pretty big take, but we're redoing our debris management plan. There are a lot of nuances that have been pushed down by FEMA to get your reimbursements and some of those things that what we have to do to ensure that when we do move debris, that we do get reimbursed for those funds. So just little nuances that we have to change in our plan. We're actually re-hauling our whole plan. We have divided the county into seven response disaster areas, and we're looking to have two large debris fields, possibly three that are adjacent to, right in the middle, located of most of all the disaster regions that we have divided those up. And example, what we have to do on the front end is obviously, contact the owner of those. We have to take pictures of what it looked like before, so that when we're done with that, we have to put it back, and that's where FEMA pays all for that during a disaster. So those are some things that we're working on now, that you'll see some changes in the 2028 version. But for now, that's where we are for 2024. And any questions?
Thanks, Chief. Any questions?
I just have one question, Chief Opett. Where, and is this plan in its entirety available to the public?
It is.
And where can they find it?
It, it is located, I'll have to follow up with you to see if it is on the most recent website, but it'll, it is available up on our website. There are a few things that are terrorism-specific that won't be available because of the nature of that, but for the most of the, the Emergency Operations Plan is available to public at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Opett, I was just curious, are, are fire stations identified in that plan? Do you have to update that for the new fire stations and things like that as well?
Yes, yeah, that would be a critical infrastructure. Attached to this plan, too, are the specific hazard indexes that we have, and that is for anywhere from a tornado to a hurricane, to a flood, to a train incident, to an interstate, a large-scale interstate incident. So those are always taken a look at, because we are facing new hazards every day. Now we, with AutoZone coming up, a new hazard there is what we call big box hazard, right? So now we have to include a plan for how do we, because of what goes into those big boxes that are coming over there, I say big boxes, million square foot, right? Those are new hazards and threats that we face, that how we're going to, if something would be released out of there, how do we respond to that?
And does it, does it address anything as far as future personnel needs and stuff like that?
Not this, not for emergency management, no.
Not that plan, okay.
It can be a tool for that, but not, not, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
The goal here is just how, how do we, on the front end, is we're planning for any emergency coming down the pipe, so that we're not behind the eight ball going forward.
And is it continuously updated through the next four years?
It is.
Okay.
It is, yes.
Nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution R-29-24, approving the updates as stated within the 2024 Record of Changes document to the New Kent County Emergency Operations Plan, to serve as the updated plan for any emergencies that warrant activation of the plan pursuant to the Code of Virginia 44-146.19.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief.
Last item this morning is the New Kent County Draft 2025 Legislative Agenda Discussion. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. What's being passed out is a draft legislative agenda for the 2025 Assembly Session. It is our practice to adopt our, a legislative program or, or agenda to share with our state representatives, so that they're aware of our positions on potential legislation that may be discussed. We usually pick about three or four top items that we want to focus on, action items that we'd like to see our representatives act upon, and this year, I'm proposing five for your review, and this is just a draft document, so we can remove as needed or add to it. Item one is historic horse racing revenues, which is a, a big issue for the county, understanding that the formula most likely will be changed as far as how revenues are distributed amongst localities. I propose language that states that we request legislation that ensures New Kent County receives an appropriate share of historic horse racing revenue that recognizes the level of local support and resources needed to support live racing at Colonial Downs, which is required for the authorization of historic horse racing machines across the state. So just asking that our legislators keep that in mind when they are revising the formula, that without live horse racing in New Kent, nobody can have historic horse racing machines. Item number two, an additional General District Court Judicial Position in the Ninth Judicial District of Virginia. I've received a request from our, our General District Judge to write a letter of support for an additional judge serving the, the Ninth District, and I've, I've done so. Ultimately, this has to be approved by the General Assembly, so we're requesting that they take action on that. Now, speaking of courts, you know, when I first started with the county, we might have had court three, four times a month. Now it's three, four times a week, if not more. So our courts are very busy right now, so. Agricultural and Forestal District Advisory Board membership, state code dictates who can serve on that advisory board. We do have an advisory board. The state code requires the, the Commissioner of Revenue to serve on that board. I've received a request from our advisory board to reach out to our representatives to see if that code could be amended, and I've added an, an example of amended language in there that would allow the Commissioner of Revenue, or Chief Property Assessment Officer, not all localities have Commissioner of Revenue, it depends on their form of government, but it would allow them to appoint a member that directly reports to them to serve on the Agricultural and Forestal District Advisory Committee. Item number four, this is one that's been on our agenda for some time, one that I think should stay on the agenda, because it's very relevant to what we're working on now, but that's funding for alternatives to groundwater. We know that the state is forcing us to look for alternatives to groundwater. In fact, we just renewed our, one of our groundwater permits, and there were conditions placed on that permit that within a certain period of time, I believe it's 14 years, we're going to be significantly reduced in our groundwater capacity, which is forcing us for an alternative source. So we're just asking for some funding assistance to go along with that mandate. And the other item, it was on our agenda last year, I believe, for the first time, but this is a request for funding for state mandated positions, looking specifically at the court positions. Each year, you get a request from the clerks for supplemental funding, that's because the, that's an area that we feel the state could do a, a little better in, and it should not be the locality's responsibility. So we're asking additional funding for those state mandated positions. The second section of the legislative program just includes position statements on potential legislation that will come before the Assembly this year. And I tell you, the, the first one is a big concern of mine. because I really think we're gonna see various legislations submitted from home builders associations, realtors associations, dealing with land use and zoning practices. Well, not so much solar farms, affordable housing and housing. You know, we are in the midst of a housing crisis right now. And I've sat through a couple of regional meetings where the development community and home builders associations are pointing at localities and saying that we're the reason, or we are an impediment to them building affordable housing because of our permitting and zoning practices. And they're trying to lessen that, which is a concern to me. Historically speaking, to me, it's not good. And it's my opinion, but it's not good when the state gets involved in local land use practices. We found that out with cluster subdivisions and what that created in New Kent, so.
Chairman, I got a comment on this. I was at the real estate meeting last week, and the Assistant, the Vice President of the Home Builder Association pointed out three localities that are, have reduced their amount of building permits. Goochlin had 30, Henrico, Hanover had 39, and New Kent County had zero. I'm sitting next to a Realtor, and I nudge him, I go, yeah, we have zero permitted, but we have 3,000 lots that have been approved. And we go, okay, we don't have any approved this year. Okay, but we have 3,000. And that, in context, their discussion is, and they've already sent out an email that they want to meet with me.
Yeah.
It didn't take long.
And we would be happy to share with you some data prior to that meeting, because we have, we're probably at about 360 building permits to date, which is a record for us. This is one of our busiest years as far as the issuance of building permits, so.
No, apples and oranges.
Yeah.
Approved lots, building permits. Okay, those are two different things. But it's not like we've, we've put a moratorium on building. Okay, as it was kind of stated.
Item number two, this is a familiar one for us, and that just deals with unfunded mandates. And we're asking that if the state is going to approve mandates that require funding on the locality's part, that funding be attached to those mandates. Item number three is one that, there's always bills coming up. And I think it would be great if that was passed. But this is to allow for other forms of public notifications, such as electronic forms of notifications versus using newspapers and papers of record. You know, that's a source out there that's becoming less and less popular for our residents, and I think nationally as well. The next item was one that we introduced last year. It's still a big issue for us. And that's requesting, well, providing support for any legislation that provides additional resources for our public safety workers. We're still seeing turnovers in 911 dispatch. It's harder and harder to recruit firefighters and deputies. And it's not just a New Kent issue, it's a state issue. So we would like to see, if possible, some state solutions. And the last one, item number five, I shouldn't say about, I feel like they kind of tricked us last year. Last year, we asked for more flexibility in standards for our local needs, meaning giving the resident administrator more authority to approve our requests, such as reduction in speed limits or other improvement needs, instead of going by the statewide warrants that everybody has to meet, because every situation is a little different. And I shouldn't have said, I feel like they tricked us. But, you know, they did pass some language last year that gave some ability to adjust speed limits. But that was for only on roads that were 25 miles or lower. And if you're at 25 miles per hour, that's not really a road we're gonna focus on for lowering a speed limit. So we're still asking to give more authority to the resident administrator. And that concludes my recommendation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And as you spend some time and review this, please send me your comments, things that you want removed or things that you want added. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one, Mr. Hathaway, are these, did you put these in order of prioritization?
I did not. And if you think they should be in a different order, please let me know.
Just one comment, can you change district count to district court? Number two.
Number two, ah, yes.
I do believe you're right, Mr. Hathaway, on this position, on this number one. I mean, I think you're gonna see a lot of that in the General Assembly this year. Mrs. Steers was talking about solar farms. I've been in a couple of conferences, and I think they're gonna push for those as well, so.
I did have a question about that, Mr. Hathaway. Could they, I mean, we just changed our cluster subdivision ordinance. Could they mandate us to change it to something less strict?
It's the Dillon Rule.
I mean, that's the one thing that we've put in place to control this.
Two, that I'm hearing from the home builders is that it's our permitting fees, our processes that are increasing the cost so they can't build affordable units. And I'm just not buying that. And I haven't seen any numbers, real numbers, to support that. But I think there's gonna be some legislation that, you know, if they're building an affordable unit, they could potentially bypass the zoning process, bypass the permitting process of a locality. So therefore, you would not have the ability to approve a rezoning for affordable housing project. It would become a by right subdivision.
Well, is the state gonna pay for the infrastructure to support all that, too?
That's a good question.
Ms. Chairman, and exactly what is an affordable house?
That's another good question.
I mean, I've always felt like it's the house sold, it was affordable to somebody.
Yes.
So, so I don't know, it seems to me like they're not being specific when they're saying affordable housing.
Yes, I agree.
Please look over this, if you've got any comments, questions, get with Mr. Hathaway. Does anybody have any other business?
I just had a question, Mr. Chair. Since we didn't have our budget retreat last week, and in addition to the CIP stuff that you emailed us about, Mr. Hathaway, do we have a time or plan for when we might discuss what we would have discussed at our retreat?
There, well, we'll have our March retreat. We always have that, usually the Friday after my presentation of the budget. But I do feel that there are some pressing capital projects that I will work with the chairman to see, to get on upcoming work session agendas. You know, there's the McKinney Woods Project. I've been approached and just received another proposal that I'll send you today for the use of that property, so.
Just the fall budget retreat typically just to talk about CIP?
No, the fall budget retreat will deal with the operating and CIP. It'll be the full budget.
So, all right, so you just said the fall budget retreat deals with operating and CIP. So are we gonna talk about the operating between now and March? If we're not, if we didn't talk about it last week?
Well, the, I'm sorry, the fall. I mentioned the spring, I'm sorry. The spring deals with operating and CIP. The fall, since we are in the middle of our CIP planning process right now, a good portion of that retreat was intended to deal with some capital needs that are coming up. And it's a discussion that I still think we need to have at some point. I can bring bits and pieces of that to work session meetings, or we could have a special meeting as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention that the Bullathon is this Saturday, November 2nd, in Mechanicsville. It's sure to be a good time and raise lots of great funds for the schools. Early voting is still going on through November 2nd. November 2nd is the last, well, it's the last Saturday before the election anyway. And then, please get out and vote on November 5th.
Mr. Moyer?
That's right. No, Ms. Chairman, I was just gonna say that next time we have a meeting in this room, we will have a brand-new President of the United States. And there will be some people that'll be happy, there will be some people that are sad. But during my reelection committees, I always have Republicans and Democrats on my committee. And I always remind them of the great saying from the great Native American chief, that if you, you may be from the right wing, or you may be from the left wing, but we both belong to the same bird. Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I got a couple of things. One, September, November 7th is the graduation of our new fire men and women. And that's 7 o'clock at the high school. And then on November 8th, there's a luncheon for a caregiver appreciation luncheon that will occur at Providence Forge Recreation Center at noon to 2:00. And that's put on by senior connections. And they're gonna have some stuff on what we see on TV all the time, on Medicare and the different type of plans. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. Also, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A3, for discussion of acquisition of real property for public purpose, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body in pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A8, for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice by such counsel, specifically discussion of the acquisition of real property for Route 249 water line expansion project and the acquisition of real property for the construction of the surface water intake system.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. When we come out, we won't be conducting any more business.